The Chapter 1 P on South Street. And I'll announce a notice, open session public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded, in fact it is being recorded. I ask that anyone that comes in, thank you folks, sign in so that we know that you're here. Okay, we left you with a list of things last time. Are you doing a list of things to do?
Well, if I can, I'll speak shortly to that. For the quarter, Seth Connel with the Charnan Villas. With me is Mark Rose Jr., Ronald Wilson Senior. You guys had asked us to provide several items, and we did do that. But until over later on, September 17th, which outlines that. We included some exhibit plans and revised plans. And I'll go one by one through them, and then if there's questions to get to any of the items, just let me know when we can serve them.
Well, my first question would be, have you met with the Board of Health?
Sure have.
Okay. And you're all set with them?
Yeah, yeah. My understanding is they sent you a letter?
Yeah, they had a letter. It's in the package.
But people at home don't know.
We only have, um, you do have it?
I actually haven't seen it. I just know that they did send it over.
Um, I'm talking about your, I'm back. I'm at your September 7th, your floor.
So if we can start with that one, and then we can segue into the Board of Health afterwards.
Okay.
So one of the items, the Fire Department asked us to add four feet of pavement to the inside of the public stack, so essentially extending the turnaround area there. And we did that. There's no impact to any of the utilities or any of the design standards that were met prior. And that's all detailed on the plans that we sent over. You asked the applicant to contact Mass Housing and make sure that they are still on board with everything.
Who took the Wilson Road?
Uh, the town sign, those area. So I'll, we'll go just back to that quick question. And the town provided us the name Wilson Road, and they also provided us individual street numbers too. So there's lot numbers on each one, and then the houses are also particular with what they'll be for a house number as well. There's a letter from Mass Housing in your package as well. And Mass Housing, in a nutshell, says that they do not find it as a substantial change, and that it's consistent with what was originally applied for, in their eyes.
Right, but for our purposes, it is.
Yes, yeah, we fully acknowledge that, and that's why we're here for you. You wanted to have an access and maintenance agreement for the access. And that, a draft of that is included in your package as well. It basically says that each unit will share equally in the maintenance and upkeep costs associated with the driveway. They'll pay into that fund annually, so that it'll always be their responsibility.
And who's, is there some kind of a, um, an association or something that's gonna, I mean, is there gonna be, like, an association meeting to vote on what they do to the road or whatever?
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, exactly how they have to do it is spelled out in there. There's a chairman, much like your board, and...
Because I noticed, when I saw the lot lines before, that the lots actually include the street.
They do, so, and then there's an easement that includes all of that as well.
So there'd be an easement on each of the properties for the road?
Correct, for the road. So everybody would have the right to pass and repass over that, just the way that roads and houses are used in town here.
Good, quick question for you. Does this comply with the Mass Housing requirement as far as the cost sharing? I know normally, if it's a condo or HOA, they require that the low-income units pay, they have a reduced share of the common property, so they pay a re, everything is based upon that.
They can do that a couple different ways.
Mass Housing reviewed it, and they support it, but also it'll actually reduce the cost for the affordables.
But that needs to be in the agreement?
It ends up in the final approval, because we have, they review our original reformer, we do a new reformer, and then they do our final approval.
We ran into an issue with this down at Whitney. It wasn't written in the original agreement, and it caused problems.
That was a long time ago.
Is, is each one going to pay equally, though? The affordable units will be?
Well, right now, it says they all paid equal share.
Right now, the, right now, the fee that they pay, actually, prior to the fee that they pay would have been higher.
Go ahead.
And they do pay equal shares for the, for the roadway, but they own their own building, and we're well below the original proposed fee on the reformer.
Well, I know in your original package, when it was the condo association, the apportionment was based upon the value of the units versus an equal share. So that, because the low-income units were always at lesser value, those residents, those owners would pay a lesser share.
Sure.
But in this case, it's just, you have a lot, you have, what, 12 or, 12 lots, so whatever the cost is, is divided by 12, and that's it. And I'm not sure that...
If it, if it fails, it would be kicked back by the state.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's our thing to figure out, but...
Well, my only...
Because it does come back to us later on, we do want to make sure it's covered and it meets whatever Mass Housing is currently promoting.
There are only, what, four or six units down in Whitney?
Now, there's only two.
Huh?
Now, there's only two.
No, no, but I mean, in total.
Oh.
Well, there's four, six whole units, and there's two low-income left. And all of a sudden...
The monthly fees?
The monthly fees tripled for the low-income.
These don't, these are no longer condos, they're single-family homes, so that we're in a better, better place than that.
But we're talking about the maintenance agreement for the street.
It's for a street, it's not for a lawn, it's not for a...
It's a private, it's a private, well, private.
Yeah, I think on a lot of the other 40Bs that I've worked on, they're switching to, if they can, they want the condo fees to be the same across the board. Because what you end up with is, as costs do go up over time, is neighbors start, yeah, they don't, they don't say, why does this guy only have to pay $50 when I'm paying $450? And Mass Housing, in their eyes, they say, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but the, the sale price, it has to, the mortgage plus the maintenance costs has to meet a certain income criteria.
Well, they can't get qualified, go for it.
So this will essentially bump down the sales price to accommodate whatever that share of maintenance is. But in going forward, there's just so many fewer issues, because you're not dealing with people that are paying different amounts. Everybody has an equal share and an equal responsibility.
Okay, we can talk about that.
If that's not the response that we got from DHCD, from Chrissy at DHCD, he basically said that it was, it was an issue, there was a problem that it wasn't...
Written into the plan?
Yeah, yeah.
Because of the way the Massachusetts condo law is written, they're required to, they allocate a percentage of the share of the common use properties, and if so, if you just go equal, then it...
As a percent?
He was not of the opinion that it's, that it should be equal. He, he was of the opinion that it should be prorated.
Right, and it would be prorated based on the, I mean, I understand what you're saying, prices would change. Okay. But I guess if the affordables start out as a certain percentage of the market value, then their percentage should stay the same.
You can, you're welcome to work that into the decision, and we can go, like, we can discuss it back with the state, you know, it's, it's not, I don't see it's something as a, um, it's something that needs to be addressed, and something that can be taken care of.
Looking to save this town some problems, we've run into problems, okay? And if some verbiage in there that just said that it remains at the same percentage as the purchase prices?
Sure.
So the affordable units, if they're 60% or 70% of market value, then their share should be a 60% versus 100%? Is that, I mean, that's not...
That's amenable.
Okay.
That's only if they continue to stay affordable.
Affordable.
Then it would go up to the other.
For the record, we have not lost one affordable yet.
Well, this is one of the ways that others are losing them, is they, by jacking up the condo fees, they make the, the sale cost exceed the Mass Housing limits, so...
Gotcha. Good catch.
Okay. I'm sorry, people.
I'm just writing it down, so I can reflect that.
So if they, in other words, whatever the percentage is for the affordables at the beginning, that they would be paying that percentage in relationship to the other houses? You know, I know prices are gonna go up, and somebody sells it, you know, one of the houses, it starts out at 500, and the next time it's sold, it's 600.
No, it stays, stays in perpetuity, regardless of their sale price, wasn't really tied to whoever.
So whatever the percentage is between, it starts out...
I understand where you're going now.
Okay.
So we'll have that added into that graphic, maybe then.
Thank you for bringing that up.
You have to have it revised, because you have those equal shares, right now.
Yeah, well, we'll have that changed.
Yep.
You had asked us to show what a Zone 2 or IWPA radius would look like for the originally approved wells, and there's an exhibit plan in the package that shows that, so, of large.
I can give you one if you need to see.
That's a regular.
Is that color one, or is it one of these older ones?
It's, um, it's stapled in your package, and it folds out. It's called Well Radii Exhibit Plan.
Do we have a, a larger one that we can show, put up, just in case there's any of your neighbors that...
I do not have a larger one of that. That was formatted as a small plan, just for the purposes of that series of the original. Certainly, I explained, uh, so, you have a, a red area that would be associated with each of the wells. When they go over a certain yield into the public water supply territory, they have an enhanced radius. That's a DEP regulation, not a local regulation. And there's no restriction on where that Zone 2 can fall. A perfect example of that is the school dwells Zone 2 or IWPA, they're essentially one and the same thing. It actually comes on to this property that we're talking about. So that was put there, and this could be put in place, and one of the things when we looked at reconfiguring this with the individual wells, is that it would avoid doing that. And when you look at your exhibit plan, the, the red area would indicate where those radii would fall, and within the Zone 2, there, there's separate regulations for nitrogen loading, and it could potentially impact the expansion of dwellings on those, of button properties. So the individual wells that are proposed would avoid this entirely. There would be no restrictive radiuses from this project put onto the button properties.
About the wells that were, when I was looking at the plan, those first three going in, okay, the wells are gonna be up in the back corner, right?
Yeah, there's actually five wells in that back corner.
Okay. And they seem to run along the lot line, the piping for them?
Yeah, we can get to that in a second. We changed that in response to, to your comments at the last meeting.
Okay, about the screening and stuff?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering who's gonna maintain this, so that there aren't trees growing into the water lines?
Okay, I can touch on that, if we're, if we're good on the exhibit plan, are there any questions related to that? And I'm happy to jump back to that if they come back.
Yeah, this, this red one that you're talking about, okay? Now, these red lines go outside of the property, right?
Yep.
And is that the way it was before? Is that what you're saying?
No, that's if they were to become public water supplies. They get an enhanced protective radius, so...
Yeah, it's 400 feet around the well, that's...
Yeah, 400 and change. It has to do with how many gallons are coming out of it, that's a correct take on that.
So you're saying that you don't want to do that, because it would go on?
It would impact a button.
And how would single well, I mean, you're drawing the same amount of water, right? Again, I don't know about this stuff, so...
The, the, a single well doesn't have that secondary Zone 2 radius. So the Zone 2 is a state-mandated thing, that there's separate requirements within...
So it's not that you might not draw it, it's just that it's not mandated by the type of well that you're putting?
Correct, that's correct.
Your 601 sheet, in the right-hand corner, you got proposed location of temporary sediment facing, if required. And that's right in the neighborhood of, I think it's three hours?
So that, that's a construction time detail, so what they do with those is, if there was a reason that water had to be diverted while they're doing construction, there's an area for it to settle, doesn't there?
That's not gonna, okay.
No, it's, it's only a temporary thing, and that's just to make sure that G-Water and foundation would come into play if, if the foundation were in the groundwater table. That's not gonna be the case here. But say there was a foundation hole open, and then it rained, like, eight inches or something overnight, and they had to remove some of the water from that hole, that, that would be designated area for that to be done, and let it naturally infiltrate back into the ground. But it's, it's only construction time thing, it's not a long-term thing that would have anything to do with it. And that's, that's mandated by stormwater pollution prevention.
Yeah, to prevent, or even though this site, that would never happen.
So we'll move right on to the Wells Utility Accession. One of your big concerns when we spoke last time was that it may be difficult to eventually breach the well areas if there was ever a problem with one of them.
And it would end up with the screening?
Correct. So what we did is, the bold yellow areas on this plan, we provided permanent 20-foot-wide easements that would allow direct access from the roadway back to that area.
Well, I understand what you're saying, what I'm concerned about, or what my concern was. Pipe for the first house on the, on the street, the one that's facing the opposite way, that pipe goes all the way up to the back?
Correct.
What is gonna prevent a tree from growing on top of that pipe?
So we actually, when we originally had it, we had them close to the lot lines, and in response to the comments we received last time, we moved the water lines themselves much further away from the lot lines. And so that preserves, originally you required a 10-foot vegetated screening strip all around the project. And there was concern that the water lines would have encroached into that. So we widened that area to allow the water lines to be completely located outside of that. So now there's a 25-foot wide strip back there that has an access easement, so anybody could drive any size vehicle back there to get to those, and that's still gonna fully preserve the, the screening that you originally approved. And then the area that the water lines will be in is actually lawn area.
So, the well for the first house, okay? And I see you have access, but what does that mean? That, that if you own that first house, you're gonna have to go and mow the 10-foot-wide pipe area? Who's gonna mow it?
Everybody has to mow it.
What's gonna prevent a tree from growing on it?
The fact that there is no water table, every, every tree that is there, trees, trees only affect septic, trees don't affect wells, unless I chose the shallow well. But an artesian well is drilled all the way down into the rock, so you can go as many trees over them as you want, but...
I'm talking about the pipe that goes from the well to the house?
Now, I've basically taken almost every tree down the property, other than the borders, and everything there is shallow rooted within the top two feet.
Okay.
Because of the fact, that's, that's the only way they can get water, because it rains, they have to get it out of the womb, because once it hits the gravel, it just goes down, and it's gone, doesn't exist. So everything there is shallow rooted, so the roots actually go down to those well lines, and...
But I know a squirrel that's gonna bury a quine, okay? I mean, I'm just, do you know what I'm saying?
The well, the well line itself is five feet deep, and then they're within a lawn area now. So we're, we're not dealing with something that's going across country through wooded areas, it's, it's right out in the open.
But if it doesn't get mowed, then it may be, may be done wooded area.
It would be highly unlikely in this, but if you wanted something that specified that that area is to be mowed...
By the owner?
Yeah, by the owner, or annually, whatever you needed.
This to be kept clean?
Because septic, they do it annually, they, they mow this, they cut down their trees in the brush on septic.
Yeah, I mean, if you get a sapling that's two foot tall, it's only got two foot roots. But you get a 10-foot tall tree that's been there for two or three years, then you start getting root.
Because from what I was seeing on there, there's like a 10-foot piece of land that is really, that land belongs to this house, right? That goes over to the well. There's a 10-foot wide strip that goes over to the well, right?
Would it, but now there's a 25-foot wide easement to, to provide that access in the water lines, all the way that distance.
But the pipe still goes on the little strip?
No, it's out in the easement. It's out, it's out in the easement now, because you were concerned about...
You were concerned about the...
So how does it get from the well to the house? Where's the pipe go?
It's on, it's right on that sheet.
It's right here, and then it comes...
There's actually a fence, for the benefit of the butter, and it's gonna be on our project side of that fence itself.
Basically, where the original driveway was, which is gravel and hasn't grown anything for it.
So I think she's asking is, who's mowing on top of that line where the well is, I mean, where the line is, that's five feet down from the house to the well?
It would be each unit's yard.
Well, right, but what I'm saying is, this one here would have to mow all the way back to his well, is that what you're saying?
No, there's an easement, I mean, each unit's exclusive yard would go back, in that case, it goes back to the fence, and there's gonna be a water line in there that...
It's not exclusive, it's all...
It can't, because you have, you have the, you have the pork chop lots, so it can't. You have the rat tails, so...
Yeah, so lot...
We could overlay landscape easements.
You can't, you're gonna have, I mean, it's just gonna be like a bowl of spaghetti of easements.
Right, because this individual would have to mow his 10-foot-wide strip back to his well.
Exactly.
My point is the other unit's yard is there, but we could certainly specify that as part of the maintenance, that that strip is maintained on at least an annual basis if it's not done by...
So this is, um, part of, okay, so, this pipe, when it passes over here, is part of this lot?
It's...
No, it's not. It has, it has its own rat tail, so it's, it has 10 feet that goes over, it has 10 feet, it's nobody's lot, it's Lot 1.
No, the wells, the wells, the, with creating that easement right now, the well lines are going through an adjacent...
Right, but she's saying that 10-foot, that 10-foot strip is part of Lot 1A.
Correct. All the way down, yes.
And how does that affect, how does that affect the well line?
And we don't want vegetation to grow on it.
How is that gonna affect the well line if it's not in that location?
How is it gonna affect?
It, it doesn't matter anyway, I mean, you're, you're still looking at issues with neighbor, neighbor issues, I mean, you're, if somebody says, no, that's my 10-foot strip, you can't have a swing set on it. You know, I mean, how, what are these easements gonna look like? They're, they're gonna be a mess.
Well, the easement, the easement that exists on the well line is pretty...
But this isn't, this isn't even an easement.
No, there is...
This is part of their property.
Right, and then they're doing, but they're doing a utility easement through that person's property.
Right in here.
To keep it off...
To get to where?
No, 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 that's an access easement. It, it took me a while to figure all this out. So this is an access easement. This is gonna be a utility easement, right here. So you're gonna have the line, the, the person's property goes like this.
Sheet 2 is the best, I can grab that for you.
So here, this is part of Lot 2, right here.
Right.
Okay, but Lot 2's well line goes right here.
Right.
So it's not in the, it's not in its own 10 feet. Which makes it extremely...
Do you comprehend this, do you know what we're saying?
That was because the board was concerned of the access and maintaining, maintaining those lines in the future. I've been building here for 30 years, and I've never had a well line that's needed to be replaced, or maintained, or fixed.
So we originally had, each well line was entirely on its own lot, and we moved that to...
So this is just an easement now, is that what you're saying?
There is an easement there.
It's not part of the lot?
The wells themselves are on their own lots, but there is an easement to allow the water lines to be moved off the lot line to, to preserve the screening for the benefit of the others.
Right, so, because we wanted the screening in back of that.
Yep.
So now, this is an easement until they get over here, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Where does it end? I mean, I see the, the line going into here.
Let me switch the sheet for you. So that dashed line is the, is the utility easement, in that back section there. And it also steps out here to provide future vehicle access if it was ever needed.
So this whole thing is all one easement?
Correct.
Which is part of each one of these lots?
Each lot would be crossed, or many of the lots would be crossed by an easement.
Okay, but I still would like to, and again, we need to have that screening in, that 25 feet of screening. But now that this belongs to this lot, and this is just a utility easement, okay? Who's gonna mow it?
We can spec, like I said, we can specify that that's, that's in the agreement for the development, then, if you would like. I think it's...
I don't know, how do the rest of the folks feel? I mean, and...
Well, I was, I'm more confused now, because Lot 1 has the well out in the back. The last time we saw it, it was sort of a Z shape with the lot out front, and then a little strip, and then the rest of the lot in the back. Are you saying now that they're not connected?
They're also connected.
They're still connected.
They're all still connected.
The lots have not changed since last we spoke.
The lots are exactly the same shape.
We just added an easement to move things away from the area, because we're concerned about the buffer on the...
Well, before, the 10 feet wide strip is part of the lot.
It still exists, it still is.
Well, it is, but now it's an easement instead of...
No, it's, it is part of the lot. And then on top of that, that layer...
On top of that, we overlaid an easement on the, on the rest of the basins.
So if I understand...
The lots are still continuous.
So if I understand it correctly, last time you were putting the water line...
In the 10-foot.
In the, the little strip of land that the... Now, the water line may or may not be, it's just going to be in that easement, which crosses everybody.
It's entirely up to the board which way they would like to do it. We propose it the first way, we produce it another way, and we're happy to do it either way. But in thi, in this particular place, there is no vegetation whatsoever, and we're proposing a pan策finia butter in the, in the property.
I have a quasi-related question.
Sure.
Just looking, for example, at Lot 2A, which is now number four, house number four, when it's built, if it's built according to this?
Sorry, I can't, I can't find it. I just told him I can't figure it, I can't figure out the phone. Shut up.
It's a big stomach, it's a very intense...
So from the edge of this development, to all the different varying, you know, Lot 1A goes behind Lot 2A, and then you have the utility easement. How much distance is there from the back wall of that, the exterior back wall that blocked the house on Lot 2A to the edge of the easement?
So there, just in general terms, all the houses are a minimum of 40 feet from their, their back lines. Many of them are much, much more. And then it's a 25-foot wide easement, so worst-case scenario, you would have 15 feet from the deck to that.
Okay, so, what started out as half-acre lots...
Which still are.
Still are.
Yeah, but there's a road on that, and an easement's on that.
Well, only half of that is really usable for anything, to begin with. So now, you went from a half-acre to a quarter acre, and now you're cutting off a large section of that with these easements around the perimeter, and the rat tails, spaghetti locks, whatever you wanna call them.
Well, it...
If Lot, if, if I buy Lot 2A, and this house is built, where do I put my swimming pool?
Yeah, well, that's not an option for, for this type of development. That type of person...
It won't fit, it won't fit with the offsets, because then they're gonna have to comply with the generic offsets of the town.
I don't know, I would be pretty pissed off if I bought a half-acre lot.
I don't think you would be.
Take Lot 2A, okay?
I don't think you would be, because you can't afford, you can't afford to put a house of this size in Berlin. People are...
Let's just, take Lot 2A. Lot 2A also includes up in the other corner. They're not contiguous.
Well, they are contiguous, with that 10-foot strip.
That's, but that's an easement.
No, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot and...
There's a lot line there with an easement overlaying the whole thing.
And just, if you buy a, a house that's 800 feet from the road in this town, both the power company and whatever telecommunications company you choose, after the fact, they come in, they, they take their own easement for their own equipment. They'll run that right up, so it's really not the utility easement and they will run that up there and that's gonna burn up some of the land. There's a lot of lots that are...
They take a twenty-five-foot easement on the edge of the road, your property, all around town.
So for maintenance purposes, we have a buffer, which I'm thrilled about, that you reintroduced that buffer for the neighbors. But what if Lot 2A, house number four, decides they don't wanna mow the back?
Well, that's what, if, if it's your project, we could specify that that easement area, if it is not maintained by the individual lot, needs to be maintained.
We could add a set of covenants to it, you know...
That's, that's a better answer.
Covenants are better than going and actively associating.
So each lot area has to be maintained and if not, then the neighborhood would have to be pulled back.
Well, but there's no neighborhood association?
No, it's just, it's just, they're, they're just, they're general covenants. They're, they've been on every subdivision I put in. They're meant to keep good neighbors, good neighbors. They're, they're meant to make it so the town doesn't have to get involved in things. The covenants can say, "No outbuildings, no pools, no sheds, no, no, you know..."
Sure. I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just looking twenty years down the road.
All right, who's gonna be here?
I hope so.
At that point, I mean, I care, but somebody will, okay? And...
The people that are living in those houses will care because they'll love them and they'll be happy that they got to come to Berlin and live in their own...
We have a problem coming up later on with the day with neighbors and...
Yeah.
And they don't love each other.
Hmm, not loved.
Not loved at all.
And there are twelve of them.
I have another question about these lots. Lot 1A, it looks like it has land on the other side of the street, is that correct?
Yep.
Yep.
And that its land also runs all the way down the property line to the corner where it turns and...
Where the well is.
No, 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 other side, other side. Yeah, the street. So on the southern side of it, there's this, this little strip drawn. Is that part of Lot 1A over here? So they have to mow all the way, all along that property line for the other?
There's, no, you need to understand that we were obligated to provide ten-foot natural screening that takes all around. So that's...
So he owns all the, the screening on that side?
Yeah, so there'd be an area that could not be touched within that little strip.
Is that the strip ten-foot wide?
So we didn't contradict our information here. If we had a ten-foot area that some is supposed to be screened and others want it mowed?
No.
No, 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 I'm on the other side, I'm on the other side.
There's no conflict. There is a...
How wide is that strip?
Strip?
Can I ask a personal question? Why wouldn't you just draw it straight to the lot?
'Cause he has to get the square footage.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, it was leftover strip of land there. The lots had what they needed and there's, there's a small drainage area in that that's part of the access easement as well. And that was left over from the prior approval.
And that's a screening area?
What's left over?
Now, is that, although that screening area is owned by the owner of Lot 1A, is that screening going to be maintained by the housing association or by this person?
The screening was, it was natural. It's...
The original approval, the screening was also left, left natural, exorbitant, Peter, on the whole.
So twenty years from now, is the owner of Lot 1A going to know that they're not allowed to cut all that down? That it has to be screening?
Well, their, their house would be subject to the comprehensive permits or whatever conditions are put in that.
And so you guys come in.
And actually, their land, that narrow strip that goes from Lot 1A, also known as house two, across by the lot line from Lot 2A, number four, that looks to be like, what, ten, fifteen feet wide?
Yep, in that, it's on thirty feet, but...
Is it?
It's thirty feet wide. So now, we need to have a buffer in there, right? That's gonna be part of the screening in there?
They're talking, right?
The screening was all, we're not, basically, you guys are bringing out purpose here. We're, we're gonna, at the start, we're looking at two different places. Okay. No, but the screening, the screening was already approved.
Right.
The screening was already approved and we're...
The screening is fine. What I'm looking at is the practicality of it and who's gonna maintain it now. Before you had a condo associa, no, it's just a, yeah. Before you had a condo association and we could write into that agreement, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, they do the other thing. Now we have a group...
So now you could add those to the covenants that we put in place for the individual homeowners.
Okay, and what happens if they don't do it? What is the recourse?
There's covenants in every subdivision in Massachusetts, so the recourse is between the neighbors, it's not between the town.
But... But the person who would be complaining about the screening wouldn't be the person that's part of the covenant. It would be a neighbor.
Your region.
No, I'm, I'm really trying to prevent something, things happen along those lines, okay?
Oh, that's, that's the easement line, actually.
I'm, I'm just saying...
But actually, no. The neighbor, once it crosses their property line, they can cut down whatever they want.
Showing the dimensions.
Not on this plan.
No, only on the lot layout, my ass.
Right, but we are requiring that there be screening there.
It's just a, a script material from the...
Who's gonna maintain it?
It should be a dash easement line.
Yeah.
And... This, I mean, this is...
Screening, screening comes and goes with thirty-year generations. I think it, it reaches a little farther there. I mean, people plant shrubs and then they have to rip them out.
Well, if I lived here, I'd go on screening.
You're on, just, I think you're still on the well line side.
Yeah.
The side, yeah.
We don't cross the street. House number two, Lot 1A, is a strange-shaped lot, not only because of the well in the back, but it goes across the street. And then it has a sliver of land that goes across the street from house number four.
Yeah, Lot 1A surrounds Lot 2A on three sides. Yep.
Now that, you're talking about the Peter and Paul Willis side.
It's kind of polluted.
Now you left a whole bunch of trees there that have been naturally there since time began.
And that's what we want, okay?
Okay.
But who's gonna maintain it and what if he decides to cut it down?
Why would anybody in their right mind choose to cut something down and maintain something that they, they're not gonna gain any benefit from?
Can you guarantee it's only people in their right mind who'll buy these houses?
If you want to put, if you want to put no, no cut-down policy along the area, then you do it.
It's just the, the...
You can't enforce it in anything else in this whole entire world. Some people, some people live by, some people live by the ocean, okay? And, and they're rich. And trees grow up and they're not supposed to cut them down. And they, they cut them down and the conservation comes in and they find them. You're reaching...
Conservation would have no...
No, they have no authority there.
Right.
But if you put, you can do the best you can, you know, put, put a...
That's what we're trying to do and we're just looking, because we've had...
I, I personally would not want the, I personally would not want the growth that's there because it's all invasive. And, and it's...
Well, maybe if it's invasive into what, our house number two, Lot 1A, they decide to get rid of it.
They can cut anything once it grows, it will die.
But that's the screening.
It's not gonna go to 21A, it doesn't, it's gotta cross the street, you know?
Why don't we prepare a separate plan that would be called a no-cut plan? Then it would designate the no-cut areas and that would run with the property as well.
Just out of curiosity, is Lot 1A an affordable unit or a regular unit?
1A is affordable.
Oh, that might seem worse. Excuse me.
Just in thinking about requiring trees don't get cut down, what also would happen if someone, if a tree needed to be cut down and wasn't cut down and it fell down on someone else's land?
Or it crossed the road.
Or, or just in thinking about the whole, who's responsible for...
Is not a tree tall enough to cross across the road?
Yeah, now, twenty years in Berlin.
But this, this would be the same situation as if a neighbor has a tree across the property line on a regular line.
Insurance takes care of it at that point. If a tree falls over onto a butter's property, the insurance takes care of it. The homeowner's insurance takes care of it. If it crosses the road, the homeowner's insurance takes care of it.
With no insurance agent there to hear it.
Then nobody will know, you won't know.
In your previous plan, it was very clear. And there was a condo association that would deal with all of these issues.
So trying to focus that this is no longer a condo association, it's a subdivision with single-family homes and, and who is that? And we don't have to jump through this many hoops with a single-family home situation 'cause those regular, those, those regulations don't exist, we don't get this kind of scrutiny.
But when you say a lot is shaped like this?
They're regular lots.
You still have a single, if you still have a, doesn't matter how they're shaped, a lot of them are shaped all over different places. The, you, if a, if a tree crosses the road and a fire problem comes in, they cut it down. If a tree crosses the road, somebody cuts it down.
But if you have a subdivision and you have houses and you're approved by the planning board, those are two-acre lots, you own the houses, you own...
It's a snob zoning, is what you're saying.
I am not saying it's snob zoning. I'm just saying, in here, you have little parcels that are overlapping and someone's...
You have, you have pieces like this that are built all over the state. Just because it's Berlin, doesn't make it, doesn't make it...
I am not saying you have to have town water in town, so what...
We're not even doing that, we're talking about trees now.
We're talking about screening and maintaining the screening.
Okay.
We have an obligation for the little that we can do for the neighbors
Yes.
to provide screening.
Sure.
And we're looking to see how that's going to work.
Okay.
Very good, you moved the water access to the back so that you can put screening in it, that's great, or a fence, or a fence ambushes, okay? But now that comes the issue of that doesn't belong to that individual anymore, that whole long thing. The maintenance of it, just as it does across the narrow street. Because technically, that street, the entrance and everything pretty much, and across the, the way, belongs to house number two, also known as Lot 1A.
Yep.
So the screening is gonna be across the street, right?
Their screening, how many, for where they're firing?
There's already, there's already ten feet of screening, which is, which is what we're proposing. So 2A, actually, their screening doesn't even exist as far as the... 1A has the screening that goes all the way up along the real property. So that would be contained by 1A and 2A has nothing to do with it.
I mean, worst-case scenario, if they don't maintain what's across the street where there's not water lines, then it grows up and you have an enhanced screening buffer now.
Or they cut it down.
But they can't, where this, you've put a condition on it that there needs to be a continuous ten-foot strip around the perimeter of the property. And if it makes you feel better, we can give you a lot by lot that specifies where the no-cut area is and where the area that they can maintain is.
Okay, well, we've kind of exhausted this, I guess, for the time being. But me personally, I don't know how the rest of the folks feel, but I have concerns about this.
I, what I see is that it's, what would have been taken care of by the operations of a condo association is now being shifted to us and that, hoping that homeowners are gonna get along for the next twenty, thirty years. Whereas if you had an ongoing condominium association, they would be the ones maintaining all of this and there wouldn't be these crazy lot lines because it would be all one lot.
But you can't have a condo association, DEP wouldn't allow it.
Again, we can have a homeowners association. I believe they can also put a, put a covenant, a covenant...
But it wasn't that DEP wouldn't allow, no, wasn't that it wouldn't allow, that he, it was, he had to go to the chain, he had to, he had to do something with the, the public water supply.
We're, we're now single, we're, what we're proposing and what's acceptable by the state is we're proposing single-family homes on single-family lots. And if you guys are concerned about maintenance, we can, we can put in, we're, when a single-family lot, you're still allowed to have an HOA and you're still allowed to have a covenant, they're both legal in any form of subdivision. We could drop HOA agreements and have the affordability...
Ultimate responsibility would be with the HOA of the individual.
So it becomes a watchdog and, and then the affordability will be a percentage of...
Well, let me see later on what you come up with along those lines and that might, I don't know.
So we can move on, we'll circle back to that.
Sure.
The next item we asked us to take a look at is you were concerned with the water line length. So we gave you a table under item six in your package.
Yep.
And that compared the water line lengths on the approved plan to what the water line lengths are now. The total water line length for the entirety of the development was reduced by three hundred fifty-one feet with proposed modification. You have a, a side-by-side for what was the former unit one.
How can that be? Because the, the wells were like in the middle of a cluster.
They still had a very similar route to, to what's being proposed now. Some of the units, the water lines actually went around the front of the units like a typical municipal water distribution. So they had some very long runs on them. So you have that table showing that. Could you move on to the next item?
Not that we won't come back, but sure.
You can come back anytime you want.
I'm sure.
Next thing, you wanted to know what, exactly which waivers that were granted would not be required. So we gave you a list of all of those. And those, that goes on to the next page there. If you'd like a moment to read those, I'm happy to let you do that.
I think we're more interested in, because we do have another hearing, actually, the scheduled eight o'clock. We do have, my concern would be what the new waivers are.
Those are all spelt out on the July thirty-first letter and I can bump back to that if you would like to know. Do you have a copy of that tonight?
Don't know that I do.
I'm, I'm just, I got one, mine was at my spot.
It's stapled to the back of the September twenty-nine...
Yeah.
September nineteenth, the Board of Health letter, we gave them a copy of, of what we had talked about.
And then happy with that?
They did, they sent the letter. It looks like this.
Seventeen, nineteen.
Yep.
So starting on page two, as you have the letter that is dated July thirty-first, and that's stapled to the Board of Health's correspondence as well from my office. And that spells out the requested modification, dimensional regulations for lot area and configuration of the lots to allow the distances between the septic systems to be as shown.
Hang on a sec. Yeah, move that one.
Yeah, July thirty-first.
Yep, he's gone. Yes. We got it extended, I'm gonna wear it better.
And then previously, your board granted a number of distances to Board Health regulations related to where the septic tanks could be located on a lot. So we've spelt that out, what's needed for the reconfiguration here. And then there's some well-location requirements. And the important thing to note on the Board of Health waiver request is that all of our components are in full compliance with local regulations to all of the abutting properties. These waivers are only related internally to the all-mot that are being created. And we had originally had, if you recall, we had some very long force veins, the sewer lines that went up to the luching areas, so that's been omitted by this. That was a local waiver that we no longer need. That was a local waiver that we no longer need. So, that was granted, but we don't need that anymore.
Okay. So, just run through for the benefit of the audience, um, not in depth, but what these waivers represent.
So, the, the individual septic systems that we're proposing, they require setbacks, um, waivers to be granted by this board related to the setbacks that are required from the Brooklyn Board of Health. And that's only related to the individually units that are going to be built. That has nothing to do with the abutting properties.
Okay. But you're saying the distance between septic and well?
Septic tank and the house itself. The town, the town requires the septic tank to be 25 feet from the foundation. The state only requires it to be 10 feet.
You're going to meet the 10 feet in every instance?
We'll be exceeding it in every instance.
Okay.
And that, that waiver was granted prior to, but we've reconfigured things so that we're asking for them again.
Okay.
And then internally, there's waivers related to where our, our own wells are located. So, the town requires wells to be located 50 feet from lot lines. Again, we're, we're in excess of 50 feet to all of the exterior lot lines, to all of the abutted properties. The waivers only related to the own lot lines inside the lot. And then the state allows, um, the primary and reserve area, so there, there needs to be a secondary septic area for each septic system. The state allows trenches to be configured in a, a different manner where we oversize the bed area to allow for new trenches in that area. The town does not proli, allow for that, but we've asked for a waiver to allow for that, so we'll be exceeding state grants on that.
Is this where they do like the interleaving? You, you initially build it with like four legs and then if you need to, as a backup, you go in between those?
Normally the trenches only have to be at four feet, center line to center line, and then it's increased to provide for room for a new one if it has to go in there.
So, you would dig the new one in between?
The reserve area is, is almost never built, even if it's a remote reserve area, because all the infrastructure is already in place. They clean out what's there and they put another one. But in theory, yes, you could do.
But you're required to have it.
Yes, and we, we're showing the reserve area there. And that's in a nutshell what we're asking for there.
What's hydraulic over there?
That's, that's all local regulation that, that's exactly what we just spoke of where the reserve areas located in that configuration. That spells out the new waivers that are required by the modification. And then we spelt out in detail the, the waivers that would not be needed as well.
And then the ones that are in yellow, that's what you had before?
That was a highlight to the Board of Health. They were just interested to see what you had granted. They wanted to wear that. So, we, we took out the exact Board of Health waivers that your board had granted so that they could see what was done before. That particular waiver you're looking at was addressed to the Board of Health. You were part of a council. And then the final thing, um, you had granted a, um, waiver to allow the project to result in net export of 10,000 cubic yards of material. These houses are a lot smaller, that was originally shown. We showed large house boxes. We talked about that. There's the entire approval process for that. All of our houses fit inside that at a much smaller scale. They're all basically, uh, first, first floor is just a foot or two above grade. So, we do have an excavation for the basements on each of them, but because they're smaller houses, we're removing a lot less material. So, we've reduced what we would need for export from the site by 2,000 cubic yards.
You'd already talked to the selectmen about that, right?
We had, yeah. And your board had granted the waiver for the 10,000 cubic yards. And so, those are, those are all the changes and highlights that you would ask us to bring back to you. Would you like to circle back to anything now? You know, there's a lot of information.
No, I, I don't understand the easements. I've got to figure it out myself.
Okay.
I need more time.
Can we?
Because I don't understand, for example, Lot 3 is going to have a water line from Lot 1 and a lot of water line from Lot 2 going over Lot 3. So, you're going to have to have two separate easements. Because if not, you have a lot, because then if not, you have, you just have one, you just have one easement, but Lot 2, they're not equal because Lot 1 needs to go through Lot 2 and Lot 3. Lot 2 only needs to go through Lot 3.
We, we did draw it as one continuous access and utility easement.
I don't think you can.
Then we're happy to divide it for your requests.
And then Lot 3 has to have a covenant that they have to maintain?
Right, right. Oh, yeah, that, that's even, that's even more. I mean, yeah, that's, that's a whole other layer. Correct.
Maybe this is a dumb question, but a lot of this stuff is confusing as heck and beyond my understanding. So, I, um, I guess I would be to request, should we consider getting a peer review on this?
How do you feel, folks?
There's a lot of changes.
I'm not, you can go to town council for your review. I, I'll point out that this is.
I'm not an engineer. I'm not sure.
I'm sorry?
I'm not an engineer. I, I cannot peer review septics and wells, so.
All right. How does the board feel?
Feel a little peer review.
We have nine committal over here.
So, the shore mark system is, is completely unchanged from what the prior peer reviewer took a look at and went through. So, so in your mind, what, what would you seek peer review for?
Well, you totally changed the wells and the septic, right?
Correct.
May I add that your first peer review found no problems with that project?
And DEP did. So.
Your peer review, you found no problems, but yet we were still, we're still here.
That, that isn't necessarily true. There were three, there were three rounds with, with the peer reviewer, so there was not no problems. And furthermore, that peer reviewer reviewed three common septic systems. We now have 12 septic systems.
That are configured totally differently?
Correct. I, I think according to the regulations, you're well within your, um, it's well within your purview to ask for a peer review of, of the changes because these are significant changes.
Okay. Would someone here to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we conduct a peer review on this project submitted right now and make comments and go from there.
Do you need to specify the type of peer review?
I think that we need to leave that open-ended. And one of the things is, we don't want to hold you guys up. So, would you like to authorize one of our membership to work with council to, um, I don't know if it's an RFP or whatever you do for.
No, um, what you would do is, um, Leanne has the names of peer reviewers and so you would have the chairman work with Leanne on acquiring a proposal for a peer review and a scope and then.
Authorize Amy and I in conjunction to engage the peer reviewer. So, move.
Correct, except, yeah, except the town. You, you would be engaging the peer reviewer.
Right. Well, with your council.
Describe the scope.
I can't.
Okay. Can we state the motion one more time because I lost it?
So, the motion, the motion, what, what I had heard him say was the motion was, um, to, for a peer review for the plans, the current plans that are before us now, which highlight the changes to the project.
So, does that include, are we, are we modifying that to say you have to authorize someone to contact?
Someone to?
Yeah, someone on this board should, because if not, you have to wait a month for, until you get.
Get started.
Review. And, and I mean, at this time, at this point in time, you have time to do that. So, you could do that, but you will eventually run out of time.
Well, not only that, but winter is coming.
Correct, and, and, correct. And, and I don't think that, that the applicant wants to wait for a month for this board to authorize.
No, I'm just saying, we, just, we're trying to break it down, the motion, and we want to get the right words.
Okay. So, I'll, I'll take it then. The motion was to authorize, and you can say whomever, to, um, solicit and engage, um, a peer reviewer for this project modification with council for me. Does that cover it, Amy?
You can just put Lynn's name in there as the.
Take one step back, follow your balls, yeah.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so that would, so that we could do that before the next meeting and I don't know if they'll be able to do the work by then, but at least.
No, they're probably.
But we'll be well on our way.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm going to take that as your unanimous vote.
Good. Maybe by the next meeting, we have some kind of a little, like, reading or writing about the easements here, the kind of the brushes.
HOA or covenant.
Yeah. You want to, um, I think we got enough to go on on what they're looking for?
Yep.
Is it possible just to convert the condo docs into an HOA?
No.
It's probably easier, it's easier, easier to do an HOA.
You mentioned condo, he's going to have to do a public well.
No, they're, they're, they're separate ownership. So, they're under a different statute, under a completely different statute, so it's separate ownership, but it, it has to be an HOA.
Are you, do you understand what our issues were?
I heard your issues. I'm, I'm really not clear. I, from my end, we had a concern and we provided an alternative and then I feel like we're getting a lot of fight back on the alternative.
We're interested.
Mr. Rhodes has told me to listen to what you want and whenever possible to integrate those changes, so I'm happy to do that.
We're interested in the screening and the maintenance of the screening, okay? Albeit written into each one of the covenants, whatever, however you're going to.
However you handle it.
However you're going to do that. We're interested in the maintenance and the keeping clear those pipes that go forever, okay? From the maintain, one that enters way up to the back corner, okay? How is that, that, it's going to be an easement, but how is that going to be maintained? Are you going to put a covenant in Lot 3 that Lot 3's got to maintain, um, the mowing and so forth for Lot 1 and 2 to pass over their property? Did we have anything else that we were missing?
The maintenance percentage, the cost.
Oh, yeah. How are you going to deal with keeping the HOA fees, um, at the same percentage as the purchase price for the, um, the affordability? I'm sorry?
Affordables versus market rate.
Yeah. Right.
Yep.
How are you going to keep the percentage the same when they start as we go on later on?
That's in perpetuity through massage in any way, but the, we think we're going to draft that into our, our little workshop.
Okay.
If we could see that draft, I think that would clarify things for us. Be it whether it's an HOA or covenant, whichever way.
Okay. Um, is there anything else anybody has? We're talking about the covenants that are going to be in there. We're talking about, uh, starting a peer review. We're talking about, um, how the maintenance is going to be for the buffer, the screening, um, and how the maintenance is going to be over those utility easements that pass over other lots. Anything else?
Um, no, I'm just calculating 180 days, which would be, um, February.
So, are you going to cook Christmas dinner for us here?
I, um, I don't have cereal.
I'll bring the milk.
That's all, that's all I made.
My sister obviously, she does takeout.
Yes.
So, we.
I made reservations.
Reservations, yeah. You're even, you're even have to clean up at home after once. Um, we all set?
Can I make a motion? We continue this meeting, this hearing to next month, November?
Only Leanne knows for sure. It would be November 13.
November 13 at 7:00 p.m. See you then.
Do you have any other questions about?
If you have any. Not related to the meeting.
Oh, that's, that is very poignant.
Are you questioning your life now?
We wish you a pleasant evening then. And we'll see you on 13.
Did we vote on this yet?
We did.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, for sure. Um, thank you and we'll see you same time next month.
I have a trial. So, are you taking?
Sounds good.
I'm sorry. Which company? You can, you can go to the company. You can get a company. Leanne, can you put down February 23rd? Yeah, I'm going to put it in my show.
Okay. I, I updated my phone. I apologize, we're running a little late. And we're going to be entertaining petition of, um, 28 Oak Street.
Couldn't join us.
And if I may, just for the camera and for those present, uh, need to notice, open session, public meetings are subject to be videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. And it is. Okay. Would you like, when you left here last time, there were several places you were going to go, Greenwood, Board of Health, whole bunch of places. You were going to talk to the building inspector. How'd we make out?
I think, uh, I think everything was given from the inspector, as in the, the four things you wanted to know, the original square footage of the house, the square footage of the house with changes, the total height of the structure with changes, with the total changes with.
So, you have a new map for us to you or?
I, I think you have, um, something from Richard Hanks, the inspector, that he approved the height. I showed him the original plan.
Yes. The day after you left, I went and saw that in the bylaw, the definition of height is convoluted for me because I don't do that sort of thing. So, if you look in the definitions in the back of the book, it says how they determine 35.
Are you ready to do that?
Well, it's got to do with what kind of a roof it is and averages and all sorts of stuff, so.
Vertical dimension measured from the average elevation of the finished lot grade at the front of the building to the highest points of the ceiling of the top story, in the case of a flat roof, or to the deck of a mansored roof, and to the average height between plate and ridge of a gable for a hip or gambrel roof.
Doesn't it? So, what I suggested is, um, Leanne. Lian sent them a note saying that the final word is the building inspector and if before you do anything, this was the next day, before you do anything about the height, check with him and have him determine what the height of the building is, so you did that.
Right.
Did you have to make any changes?
No.
Okay, so that, that's off the table. Board of Health, where do you stand with the Board of Health?
Right now, for the two units, Bill Brookin suggests that we add a thousand gallon compartment next to the 1500 gallon.
Is that creating the two septic systems or?
It's, it's supporting the original, that's what he said. Because there's existing two, two units and there's no plans on these septic tanks.
So you probably have a single compartment existing unit and he wants you to put in an additional single compartment so that, because typically now they're dual compartment.
But you must know how big it is because when you purchased the property,
Title V.
They did a Title V and they emptied the tank and they charge you by the gallon.
So it's an existing 1500 gallon septic with the leeches, but there's no original plans, so Bill Brookin says to code today, I can't support that to support your two units. So for me to comply, I have to add this thousand gallon to comply to the, to the code tag.
Okay, and have you talked to a local?
Yes.
Board of Health? And how did that go?
Which is Paul?
This is a sliver. I think that they're recommending that you go change from the five bedroom wayward to the four.
Yes, I did that.
And then they wanted two compartment septic tank, installation of two compartment septic tank or two tanks in series. So you're proposing, I think, to go to two series.
Adding a thousand next to it.
Okay, and they know how this is all going to be mapped out and everything else, okay. And how did you make out with the planning board?
We didn't go to the planning board because we were in compliance with the wetlands in the hundred.
Well, that's conservation, can we do that?
So I'm okay.
Well, one of the things we talked about is whether or not you wanted to increase the size of that lot.
We don't want to.
We don't want to do it.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments?
I will just say that I did attend the planning board meeting on September 24th and discussed with them, I was kind of expecting y'all to be there, but you weren't, so I just kind of briefed them on what we had discussed previously. They refer to what we were talking about as it wouldn't perfect your existing noncompliance. You're grandfathered, so your, your structure doesn't meet the current zoning requirements, but you're grandfathered because of the age of the house. So it's what they call an imperfect lot. And they have no issue if you choose to go to them and it won't fix all your problems, but it would make it what they call more perfect. You would move into compliance with some of the zoning requirements that are existing if you shuffle your lots around. But again, that's your choice whether you want to go after them or not, but they are willing to entertain any of that, that they think it's a pretty good idea.
Okay, so you've, have you already recorded the four bedroom thing?
Yes.
And, okay.
Bill Brookin has.
Did you have it for five bedrooms?
For some reason I understood it five, it was a Title V, so I put a five.
I see, oh, okay, you were just confused about it.
I took it to registration, to register deeds and I registered it, but it wasn't signed by Bill Brookin. So he said it doesn't, it doesn't work if I don't sign it.
Right, if he doesn't sign it.
Correct, so now it's four and he signed it.
Okay, so, and, and you recorded it?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone have anything else that they'd like to discuss?
If it's only a four bedroom septic, then doesn't that affect the room count of the, listed, there's 11 rooms in there?
So that's why he asked for the second compartment.
That sounds like now.
But it still won't change it from a four to five bedroom septic.
No, it doesn't, it just complies with the.
What they think it is.
Standards.
By default, if you have 11 rooms in the house, it's considered to be a five bedroom. So in order to ensure it is never sold or used as a five bedroom, they put the deed restriction on it. So you can have 11 rooms, but nobody's going to mistake it for a five bedroom house.
It's for selling purposes, I think.
Thank you.
How many square feet?
Well, eleven, the combined feet.
Do you have map?
I just have what is written there, which is in the front of the plans, because it's exactly the original and what's proposed and the extra square footage of the house with the changes.
So this, the original square footage for those of us that don't, so original it was.
Existing unit one is 691 square feet. Existing unit two is 2108 square feet. Proposed unit one will be.
We're going to have 108. And then proposed, okay.
The unit one will remain the same at 691 square feet. Proposed unit two will be increased to a total of 3,431 square feet. And the square footage excludes the basement garage area consisting of an additional 1,814 square feet.
So is that just the basement, this the 1,000? Or is it a combination of the basement and garage?
I'm, I'm reading it as both.
And it's going to grow by?
Oh, and up, 1,814.
It's not really, that's exactly.
Oh, excludes the basement garage area, which is.
But the footprint.
The footprint, can you read the part that says the footprint, please?
Increase in footprint, 6.5 square feet. The front entry platform and the rear deck not included as footprint increase.
Okay, folks, well, let's take out your fucking waggnails.
Can I read that?
I'm going to send that down.
Let me see if we've covered everything.
But you put a wall in where there was three or four peers, correct?
Right.
Yes, I do.
Okay, so.
But we never checked, what a, of course if, of course if.
That's existing footprint.
Was there and check everything?
It's just existing footprint.
That's it.
You expand it underneath the net porch.
For square footage, correct, square footage, that is not changing the footprint of the house.
Okay, so basically your pre-existing nonconforming structure. And it lists what you have to do or what is included in that. And then allow changes. Okay.
Maybe Kim, I want to show you something. This wall was just pierced.
This is the existing basement, this is the building. The footers were there, the building was overhanging, so that's the footprint of the house. There is a footprint, I am following the same thing, that's the overhang. That is the footprint, I expanded, I expanded right here. This little corner is a 6.5 that I added to the corner there, right here.
The, the wall used to be back in here.
I don't know about that.
The, the post, the post.
The post, exactly, same right here, yeah.
Do you know why those peers was there?
To hold.
To hold.
To hold the existing addition, which is already there.
I know it was, I know.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so now you've made another wall out.
I followed the footprint of the house, the existing.
The foot, the footprint of the house has to be what the foundation is.
That was the overhang, that is the footprint of the house.
Okay, so does someone want to compute the square footage increase? This is for any potential write-up or vote. I'm taking the total square living space.
Existing?
I hear bells, I don't know.
I have a new phone I don't want to operate.
Yeah, you want to go help Amy, she's got.
She's just playing a march.
It looks to me like the total for unit one and two after the reconstruction is 3,000, what, wait a minute. No, I'm not doing this right, two, twelve, one.
I need the sheet, I could do it if I had the sheet. Oh, Danny's doing it.
Yeah, he's at it.
Oh, good. So the total is going to be thirty-four. I've got the wrong figure for, what's the new square footage for unit two?
Thirty-four, thirty-one.
Okay. Therein lies my problem.
It's going to grow by thirteen, 1,323 feet squared.
And what percentage is that of the original square footage?
The original was 2799.
Right. So if you divide that by the new one.
Almost, almost double.
Huh?
Because you take 1323 times two is 2646.
So this was the original?
That's, that's the original and this is the proposing. This 1323 is the difference.
Well, I'm looking at 2799 versus 3122, is that right? So I need someone to divide two seven.
Forty-seven percent.
Well, but the proposing is 691.
You took, yeah, well, no. Here's the two of these, okay, so this is the existing, the 691, 691, okay? The, this is the two totals.
Four one. One, do it one more time.
You ready?
Yeah.
So if you divide 2799 by the 4122, that should give you the percentage increase, right? Is that how you do it, Jim?
Well, I got 1,500 square feet is the difference. So twice of, of that is.
Oh, I see what you're doing, okay.
So it's forty-seven percent, I think you're going up with, difference.
Now, what did you ever do about your proof, did you talk to the building inspector and were you all set with that?
Yeah, we're all set.
What do you mean?
Well, when you left here last time, you were concerned and I was kind of worried.
With the water, yes, he let us put the paper. Yeah, there's a lot of water coming this couple of days.
Now, the next couple of days, so a good thing you've got some paper up there, huh? Okay, if we were to grant this, what restrictions do you see? First of all, it'd be subject to Board of Health certification, right?
Which would be a building permit for the septic.
Well, no. What we're saying is you got to meet their standards and then we're okay.
Right.
Okay. I mean, we're not going to say what they have to be because if something were to happen and you were going to do it and you hit a older. What are you going to do? Huh?
Definitely, there's rocks everywhere.
Really?
No.
But do you see what I'm saying, if something happened, you don't want a list?
Right.
Okay, and it's do we see any other contingencies that you would want if you were to approve it?
They, uh, would.
Conservation does have an enforcing order on the property of the lot.
Please sign your letter. In other words, you think that they can go ahead?
They can go ahead with the house, the hundred foot come is about 10 feet off of the back of the house. So anything that happens in the yard, we're interested in, but, and they also.
Does that affect septic system or anything?
I think we're, we're going to have to talk about the septic, yes, because the septic system almost definitely will go within the hundred foot.
See, this is why I'm wondering, you don't, why you don't want to carve out another little piece and give yourself a little breathing room.
Because of this.
If you go over to the left, to the right, the conservation is right there, the wetlands is right there.
What about to the left?
I would be going forward to the other side, no.
I'm sorry?
I, I don't want to go over to where the road is, where the greenhouse number one, that way. I would have to go all the way that way away from the wetlands, the wetlands are in the corner and goes all around the property.
And hold on, let, let's put it this way. I am in my bodge right now to finish the house, I, I don't have a extra, extra money to spend. I'm just spending to do this, a thousand dollar, just to compromise the code. And I bought that house as the title. That's it, and I just be nice to myself too, and for my family to do that, but I don't have that kind of money to do it.
What I understand from Bill, Dave.
Dave is doing the.
He said that I am in the 50 to do septic, he think, he thinks it's in the 50.
We're going to have to talk.
Yes.
Yes.
So he thinks, so we don't know.
Unless you hit a rock.
Of course.
So what, what, doing the, this contract, this covenant from their need to go over there now and start and do the work?
We're, we're pricing out septic people to do this. That's, that's what's told, what, you know, that's the big restriction you're saying.
As much as trying to protect your interests because the way it stands now, if you weren't able to meet conservation and Board of Health, you'd, you'd have to start again.
Right, no, I the letter I have from, from Conservation, I have till, want 30 days, less than 30 days now, 20 days to put the hay, whatever that thing is called.
Well, that's okay, yes.
And then I have to fix the little violation that I had.
And then I have to fix the little violation that I had also.
But I'm saying if, when you go to do the septic, it's not just the Board of Health, but it's also conservation that will be involved. And if something happens that you can't put in what you want to put in to meet the standards of the Board of Health, then...
Then you would have to go to the planning board.
Then you start over.
But you're saying the planning board. Is that what you're saying? Has to start over?
I... Because it's going to be subject to you doing what the Board of Health and the Conservation want you to do. So you would be starting. That's all I'm suggesting, okay? All right, so what we care about, I mean, that's for you. You have to meet, uh, the Board of Health, uh, get Board of Health certification, it's subject to that. And it's subject to Conservation Commission approval of the septic.
The Board of Health recommends a water quality test.
Okay, so Board of Health wants water quality test? Okay, and then what would happen if that doesn't work out? Do they have to dig another well or something?
They could have to.
When?
Well, there's another well on the property.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, but it's not on this property.
Correct.
It will have to be another well.
Okay, what other conditions, um, do folks feel are applicable? We had no objections from the neighbors, they were happy.
Were the plans updated at all? Yet from the ones?
Very happy.
Just, just the...
Just the sheet with the calculations?
Right, the calculations.
So we want to get the, the date of those drawings or whatever the...
We want copies of those drawings.
They're the same plans, but I asked to specifically put in measures.
Yeah, that's fine. But when we write the decision, it's going to say that you're going to build in accordance with these plans.
Could we just say?
As of such and such a date?
You have a plot plan, right? Because that was one of the things we asked for, right?
That would be the originals that you guys would have.
Yeah, but that's what we said wasn't, wasn't sufficient.
There were no distances.
Yeah, there were no distances, no abutters, no... Yeah.
Well, I had the four things that you guys asked for, the original square footage of the house.
Yeah.
The square footage of the house with the changes, the total height of the structure with changes, the proposed change in the footprint. That's what, four things.
Wait a minute, what was the last one you just said?
The proposed changes to the footprint.
Right, but we also asked for an updated map. I thought, did we not?
No, we didn't.
It may not have been.
Yeah, maybe.
But you, I think I had, I sent in the pictures of whatever I had. Yeah, that's it.
Didn't listen to mentions and things. Probably a plot plan.
And all of these plans that I got here are the same. You never changed any of, nothing.
Okay, so we have to, in some way, make one of these maps usable for our purposes as a reference.
Do you have this one here?
I probably took the, you know, the footage instead of them. We can't have that. No, we don't. We've never gotten them.
Okay, so what do you think needs to be done to this to satisfy what we do?
Oh, I mean, Conservation is going to get a better one, right? You guys never saw anything with footage, plot plan, you never did either.
Well, the, for the conservation purposes, I'm going to have the whole property surveyed.
Should have been one when the property was...
Well, that's better than the other one.
Yeah, see, I'm, I'm pretty sure we said something about...
We did talk about it.
Updating the, the map, because we need to be able to.
This is the... This is what they had. This is the original lot. This is that one.
Is this the lot they're talking about, right? These structures still here?
These, this is the next door house.
The neighbors?
Yeah, that's the neighbors that I thought we had.
And what if... Lots they own?
They own this piece here. This piece out here. Which includes this.
Okay, so they can't go to the...
Yeah, she has a property.
They don't need to go there.
Look, this, this is on sixty-two.
Be careful because we may end up using this.
I won't let that. This can be used more. Not those that you can read.
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Jim, you're good at this. Why don't you, um, make those two accessible to a decision? In other words, um, we'll have the petitioner sign them and we can just do this, okay?
Okay, so what do we want to do?
So we want to do, um... Presented by petitioner and the date, which would have been last month's... Why don't you write it on your little pad first so we don't... Okay, so, uh, just put it as, something like plot plan, um, as presented by petitioner and on the date, okay? And then make reference to the lot in which the house is. Now, this other one shows the, the new size of the house, right?
The two that you just said?
Yeah.
You ready to take that down? The other bill.
I'm just going to take it right here. Yes.
That's the handout of the, of the...
That's the Title V.
So he suggested put the tank right next to it, if you can see it there.
Jim's doing his magic. You might want to include this too, Jim. Because it does show the septic system. And the foot, and I think it's important, you know, we know the footprint's only decreasing, 6.5 square feet. But they're, they're going up.
This is from this, well, right, this shows basically, like, this footprint is not going up.
Okay, so if we just have them sign off basically saying, the plot plan, this is the plot plan as submitted by the petitioner on September 11th, 2019.
Yeah.
And the Title V inspection.
Or, or you can call that the septic map if you want.
With septic map.
With septic map. But somehow you've got to, um, they, they can initial that and one of us can even, you can whoever. Just that these are the ones that we looked at. And then there was a third one, this one here.
Yeah.
And then we can make reference to those. Okay, anyone have any concerns that they'd like to raise? While Jim is doing his thing.
I happened to go through the yard the other day and I noticed one-ton trucks and so forth down in the back. Is there a business started there, going to be started there, or?
That's our business.
It's our business.
My personal trucks.
Okay. There's a big detail, but there is, you need to get a... Create a business there.
Okay. I'm not work, well. What are you saying?
Well, there's, there's a business being started there.
Where I keep my vehicles?
Or are these, I mean, is your workplace somewhere else and you're just bringing work trucks home? Is that, I don't understand what you're saying or is that what? Where's your, where's your work location?
My home.
Oh, at your home. So there is a distance out of your home?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what is the nature of your business?
Concrete. And I have just a single trucks, a three-fifty.
And that, you need to ask for a home-based contracting business.
If I have to do it?
Like, like we said, this is our first home, so these are all new rules.
No, this, this...
We can apply to your rules.
And we appreciate that and we understand that people aren't always totally aware of what they need. But if you're conducting a business out of your home, there are certain requirements that you have to meet. You can have a truck, you can have, but you need a special permit for that, to have it in a residential agricultural area. And you're not going to be able to pack them on your home lot either. Do you know what I'm saying? You've got three lots up there. I'm assuming you're not packing your work truck on the same lot that the house is. But you would need to in order to have a home-based contracting business. Does that make sense?
No.
A little lot is your home-based contractor's business. A big lot is something different.
It's mine, right? It's mine?
It is yours, but it's got, it's called home-based contracting basis because it's conducted out of your home, okay? So I'm just forewarning you, or at least I think that's what Danny's trying to do.
Is this lot and this lot are different. A home-based contracting got to be on this lot.
Well, so...
So what if it's on that lot?
Okay, hold on. Let me ask a sentence for you.
I'm trying to find...
From, from the beautist pact, then, he told me I can park my car in, anywhere over there. He told you that.
When we purchased the property, they said, only thing they didn't want was...
Tractor trucks.
Tractor trailers and, and...
Whatever.
The big trucks. That's all they said.
Right, there's a, there's a... I'm trying to find it here. How many, uh, size of the truck?
I say three-fifty.
Goes by gross vehicle.
And it goes by the lot size. And it goes...
Just trying to help you out, I'm not...
Uh, from what I can understand, you guys make it so complicated. I am so frustrated to try to get my house done. And I just, a single man tried to work just to finalize my house. And we can go over with this. If I have to comply any laws over here next time, I will. I am a man to, to follow laws.
I'm trying to advise you what I saw.
Okay, Mr. Dan, that's, that's, we're not in fight here. We just tried to find a solution.
All right. You want in the Sony board, table of home-based contracting business, how many square footage? You can have one registered vehicle, no more than 12,000 pounds.
Yeah, we have this in the house.
So you do have, can page forty-six and forty-seven?
Forty-six and seven.
Just so you guys, what you said, we, we don't like this, we don't even force it. So now you're like, our job is really to help you or help the community just for the safety of the community.
And that's like, right now I'm saying, I just, I'm just want to let you guys know that they have to have it get done.
Yeah, so, so, so I'm showing them, when you get home to your book, okay? So go to forty-six and forty-seven, because so far you've been here talking about petitions to your house, okay? And this is the first time I've heard that you have a business, or we've heard that you have a business. So just so you know, this is where he's getting information from, is on page forty-seven. So when you say a three-fifty, I actually don't know what that means. I don't know if it's a little truck or a big truck.
It's a, it's a, same, same truck.
So you'll know when you go through this, you'll see, you know, what sort of the lot sizes and what vehicles can be. And this is what the town is going to be on, all the taxes on. And I don't know, you know, what the weight is of your truck, because this is where you can find your information. And then you can, you can assess yourself if you're living in this guy on the turn.
Which is another reason you may want to consider depending on how you make out with Conservation and Board of Health, of adding some land into where the house is because if you're less than 80,000 square feet, you can have one vehicle, no more than 12,000, um, gross vehicle weight, plus one trailer, less than 10,000, and just one employee, okay? But it goes up as the square footage goes up. But it would have to be on the lot that your home is because you can't, at any point in time, you could sell off, let's say, the rest of the land, okay? And you would, because you say, well, we own all the rest of the land, we do now, okay? But if you were to get a special permit and then you'd end up selling off the other land, just keeping the small lot, and you would be substandard. Does that make sense to you? Okay. All right, does anybody have anything else?
Um, just the wording on this. So if I, I change wording, plot plan as submitted by petitioner on September 11th, 2019, special permit applies to lot 41 only.
And identified as. Is what I'm going to say.
Lot 41.
Oak Street submission. Because then you could put Oak Street submission on there and put a date on there and have them initial it and then you can make reference to it. Does that make sense?
I thought we were going to put this on there.
We are. But how am I going to refer to it?
Well, we can just, we can put 28 Oak Street plot plan.
And put the date on it and put, yeah, put, yeah, put in there. Field here, that's cool.
And then the Title V inspection with septic map and large-scale plot map also attached.
Okay. I'm going to copy that verbiage because that would have to be in a decision.
I'm going to get a copy, Jim.
How much do I just...
One.
We're all set? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that the special permit be granted in accordance with the conditions for Board of Health approval and Conservation Commission approval.
And Conservation Commission approval of the placement of this...
Whatever. They have multiple things I think they need to...
Do you understand what we're saying, William?
So does that mean I can't go forward until I...
That means you have the permit, now it's back to the building inspector.
Okay.
We still have to follow the guidelines from Conservation Committee and the others. We still have to follow the guidelines from Conservation Committee and the others.
I mean, we can't give you a building permit.
What?
We can't give you a building permit.
No, but the special permit. That's what I'm here for, right?
Yes, well, we hope, yeah. And it's not required to have a site clean, right?
No.
Well, let's take a look at the chat and make sure. Here we go, in residential agriculture. No, I would say no. Did anyone else see a reason that we need to?
No, because we're keeping it all together separately. This is through a big process.
Yeah.
All of this is a house lot.
Okay. So is everybody ready to vote?
There's no second.
Oh, she keeps us honest. Does someone wanna second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, and who's voting? Who's the reg here today?
I'm an all.
Well, I know, but we got one, two, three, four, five. So it's the five here. Make sense? Yeah, he said he's second, oh.
Yeah, second.
Okay.
Put Denny's name on it.
Yeah.
Somebody else second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? If not, all those who favor I?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. So what happens now is, I, I usually, within a week, draw up the decision. The folks have to come in and sign it. It then goes to the town clerk. And the town clerk holds on to it for twenty days to see if there's an appeal. There is no reason, or in the past, let's put it that way, you need to check the building inspector, but in the past, once it's approved, the building inspector usually says you're on your own. All I'll say to you is, if you go ahead and do something and someone appeals it, then you may have to undo what you do. Does that make sense?
Why would someone appeal?
Because you're crazy.
I'm just saying that opportunity is there. You can't file it in the registry of deeds.
So you're saying, wait for twenty days and then go forward?
I am saying that what most probably I would expect the building inspector will say to you is that, I mean, you've gotta get septic in first.
Right.
But...
Well, not first. I gotta finish the roof. I wouldn't have paper on it.
Okay, you gotta finish the roof, but before you do comprehensive other stuff, you've got to have...
Right.
Okay, you're not gonna get, I wouldn't think, an occupancy permit until you've got conservation and border health satisfied.
Right.
Okay? And then, there's, you know, might wanna think about the home-based contracting business.
Right.
Keep yourself out of trouble.
Yeah, absolutely. But again, it's signed and it's held for twenty days, after the twenty days...
We have to first develop it, which it usually takes me a week. Then we have to get everyone to come down and sign that voted on it. And then it goes to the town clerk's office on the next day that she's available. And she then starts the clock, and it's twenty days. The reportable item that you need, you don't, you can't report it until after those twenty days have passed, because she signs that there's been no appeal, or if there was an appeal, that it's been successfully dealt with, okay?
So what happens if there is an appeal?
The only place that could be appealed would be in court. And if a neighbor chooses to take your court, then you're in limbo.
You can get, go to the building inspector and say you wanna put the shingles on the roof. He can say, go ahead. I wouldn't do too much more, other than go try to do your surge and stuff. So you can make it weather tight. Because if somebody complains within the twenty-day period and you put the roof on and you dull the rest of the whole house up,
Electrical wiring.
Electrical earthhouse. They can come back and say, make a complaint, take you to court along with us.
And if they're successful, okay? If they're successful. Why would they do it? I have no idea.
Right.
But I feel obliged to tell you that, okay? And then after you record it, which you need to do, record it in the registry of deeds, a copy of that registration is from that to the town clerk, so that it's on file with the town. So that twenty years from now, when all of the characters have changed, that you have that in your back pocket, if that makes sense to you. Okay, I think you're all set with us?
Thank you, guys. Making a motion to close the meeting.
Close the hearing.
Second.
Oh, don't close the meeting yet. No, I'm gonna give this to you, and you're gonna give me a copy of it before you go home.
All done.
Okay, let's see, we're past the nine o'clock. Does anyone need a break, or should we go, keep going?
Please go, keep going.
We have thirty-six Freedom Road. Who's the petition here? Would you care to come down? Oh, okay. Have you shown, have you given your notifications and newspaper outcomes?
No, sorry, here's the...
Well, while we're waiting here, I'll just say, I'll open the hearing and tell the public that public's meetings are subject to be videotaped. Your image is being recorded, and that is being recorded. Okay, let's just... We need a second here. While Leon's doing that, I'm gonna ask one other thing, because I had a disturbing question. I'm gonna call the folks at the table and ask them if they have any personal or professional relationship with the Schulz's. Susan?
What?
I'm asking if you have any personal or professional relationship with the Schulz's.
No.
I was about to say, who? Jimmy?
I do not. Nope.
No?
And I'm a no. Now I'll ask the Schulz's. Do you feel you have a personal or professional relationship with anyone at the table?
No.
Okay. Okay, did you just make note of that? Thank you. All right, would you like to tell the folks what's going on here and what you're asking us to do?
Yes, so, there's some of the paperwork there.
Yes, we have.
So, I live at thirty-six Freedom Road, and I share a common driveway with, I'm one of three houses that share a common driveway. And if you actually looked at the maps that were provided here on the last page, it's, well... I'm lot eight, the last lot in, and there's two others, lot seven and lot six, or something behind it. So what I have on there, what this is regarding is some insulation of some very obnoxious speed bumps onto the common driveway. So if you look at last page of the map, and we're looking around for it, you'll see I highlighted, actually, I think in here, it probably has little arrows in the green, where the four speed bumps that actually been placed. You can see that at lot eight, right at the actual border of the property, where my private driveway starts and the common driveway, there is one speed bump. There is a second speed bump on lot seven, approximately in the middle. And then there's a third speed bump, right approximately where lot seven, lot six meet. And then the fourth speed bump, approximately where lot six ends, and then the common driveway. The map here, this kind of older one, that shows the original common driveway where Freedom Road had not been extended yet, and it's kind of through the rotor, into there where it comes into the rotor. So the...
Okay, well, maybe we could take a step back for a moment first. What you are doing is appealing a decision of the building inspector.
That is correct.
And his particular interpretation of one article of our bylaw.
Correct.
So if we could go to that article.
Sixteen, Article seven, seven, ten, and common driveways. It's a real five, it's slightly sixty-one in the book.
Oh, you're very good, thank you for your help.
That's where it starts.
Final point?
Yeah.
Has Laura got it copied?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Look. This driveway was put in and permitted in nineteen ninety-eight.
Right.
Current zoning bylaws don't really do much for us.
Okay.
What we need to go by is the nineteen ninety-eight zoning bylaw, which I happen to have.
Oh, Mr. Smiley Pants.
The paragraph numbering, I think, is a little bit different. It's paragraph seven thirteen dot two C. I'm not sure, I guess it's still the same one.
Yeah, it's the same.
So, back in nineteen ninety-eight, when the permit, the original special permit was approved, the paragraph is different, it was, this was amended in two thousand and four, but the pertinent part is the same. So it, the maximum slope is defined here, the maximum slope of any common driveway at any point shall be fifteen percent. The rest of that paragraph, it's in the current.
You want to all of that to tell them we can still use the bylaw, right?
Yes, yes. The rest of the paragraph in the current bylaw did not exist at that point.
Mine, 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 mine. He's an overachiever, we should...
Mind a little net.
Tiny bit.
Okay, what we're specifically doing is seven thirteen dot two on page sixty-two.
Yep.
You meet with Ellis, Dan, and you know who's done.
Yeah, looks good.
For finish.
Okay. So the building inspector or building commissioner determined that this was not applicable to your circumstances. Is that my understanding?
Correct, this statement regarding that without applying.
So the question before us is, we have one of two choices. We either say, yes, we believe the building inspector did this correctly, or we say, no, we think this was wrong, that this does apply. So what you need to do is, I don't know what kind of documentation you might have as far as the agreement you have for the common driveway, or whatever other...
Yes, there is a covenant that you have. There is a covenant for the common driveway.
Okay. So we need to determine whether or not we feel that the building inspector was correct when he said seven thirteen dot two does not apply to these circumstances. So maybe you can kind of direct your discussion around that.
Okay. All right, well, as you, as was said, nearly about this, was that this seven thirteen dot two C refers to the design specifications of the common driveway. Right? And referring to the maximum slope, it does refer to that, that any point shall be fifteen percent. It doesn't say it's, as you measured, twenty feet, thirty feet. It specifically says at any point. The specific speed bumps that are down, they are of a width of approximately twelve inches, at a maximum peak of three inches. So it's text the three inches within, or it's just three inches height within six inches, which is actually a fifty percent slope, significantly greater than the maximum of fifteen percent specified here. Now, when we talk about the speed bumps, I mean, they are part of the driveway now. They are installed on it, and obviously, they are temporary. They can be unscrewed and screwed back in. But they are part of the common driveway. It's not a case of, you can drive down the driveway and go around it. You try to do that as much as possible. But now, they actually are extended from one end of the easement to the other end of the easement. So they are something that, you know, you say it's not part of the, not part of the driveway. I mean, it's like, how can you drive down the driveway and not be impacted by them? Also, if you look at the, this section, and maybe you'll have to look into the next piece of it here, there's a section called seven fourteen dot two, that exists that... What's seven fourteen dot two?
Seven fourteen dot two.
It refers to the association agreement. We probably did, because that basically allows what is in our covenant and describes a lot anymore.
Yeah. Association agreement, association agreement must impose upon members the obligation to repair, of repair, maintenance, and snow removal so as to cause the driveway, including the drainage serving the driveway, utilities located under, across, or along the common driveway, and the sightlines to the intersecting public way to be repaired or maintained, and snow to be removed in such a manner to ensure the continuous year-round access to each lot by fire, police, ambulance, and other vehicles. Adequate delivery of public utilities to the lots served by the driveway, and so that the initial specifications of the common driveway are maintained.
Okay, that's exactly how it reads something still today. And in particular, is that last section you said, and so that, so all of these things about the, you know, maintenance and that stuff refers to, and so that the initial specifications of the common driveway are maintained. So, I mean, this is the specification, so go back to the design, you know, design specifications. And there has now been, you know, a structural change to the driveway with the addition of the speed bumps. Also, one other thing to explain, others are the two other owners that are part of the common driveway. They're, you know, pushed through the, these things by taking a two-thirds vote under the, seeing the claim under the covenant, that they could vote these in. We actually weren't a part of the meeting, it actually wasn't even part of their agenda that they sent to us. It was sent to us afterwards in their meeting minutes. But either way, they're claiming like a two-thirds vote. If you look at the covenant, there's a three-page covenant provided. It talks about how the, you know, the three owners of the lot lots.
If I could just drop you there if I might. While I appreciate that you have questions about whether or not requirements of the initial agreement were met, what we need to decide is whether or not the decision of the building commissioner saying that these sections don't apply, do in fact apply. Does that make sense to you? Regardless of any covenant or agreement that there might be. Regardless of any covenant or agreement that there might be among the parties. Anyone have questions, thoughts?
Well, I took the time and drove down there.
I did too.
And I was pretty amazed. I'd hate to be the guy in the back of the ambulance trying to come out of there and go over those bumps.
Thank you.
Or fire truck. It's only three houses on it. Can't you guys get along?
We try.
Are all three parties here?
Yes.
Yes.
Is anyone here from the fire department or an EMT that would care to comment on accessibility? Although I don't even know that that would apply to this. It's basically saying, is, is anyone here from the planning board?
Uh-uh.
Oh, he's hiding out of my per.
I'm not hiding.
Do you care to comment on the intent of the bylaw? Were you a party to it being written, or?
No, it was done prior to me being on the planning board.
But I'm sure you discussed.
I'm here representing, I'm not representing the planning board tonight.
Okay.
I mean, one of the things that play on me, I mean, thank, thank you for any, it's probably going driving and trucking out, and if it hasn't come down, I think that would be a high opener for you to drive down to a house, come down, turn around, drive back, think about how many times you want to go over that with every single round trip that we do coming and going. One of the things, you know, clearly there's, you know, something that in the zoning that makes it clear, at least in terms of measurable, and, you know, description of what could be, it's not vague in that, that the slope is something you can measure and figure out whether something reads that. And the only, so you actually have the advantage that the zoning actually has this information in there, and it's something that, you know, if you make the decision that it does apply, it's very measurable and not something that's going to be ambiguous. I think the only thing you're trying to think now is why would it not apply to the speed bumps? I mean, the speed bumps has structurally changed this common driveway. I only see, you know, we don't have no idea what's going to come winter time. I have no idea if he's going to pick them up only on the day it snows and try and put them back down, or they'll be coming up like, you know, town, I come November first, you can't park in the streets, and they won't go down again till April fifteenth. I have no idea. But clearly, there's lots of potential for problems with them. And one of the things you've seen are some pictures, you actually had one set of pictures there, it's, there's, I'm not sure how they were combined. There's three pictures showing how the water is even how pooling up against them. In fact, the main one's really pooling up is the speed bump that's right up against my property line, the one that's the extreme angle. And that's not even a heavy rainfall. I mean, I'm wondering what's it going to be like once the water starts freezing, or going to have big frozen puddles right in front of the speed bumps? And when you start to go over these things, I mean, sometimes the tires squeal. I mean, it's like, as you hit them, and, I mean, they are not trivial things. I mean, basically, I looked up online, a common, you know, D speed bump, they're actually rated at one to two miles per hour. I mean, they're about as most obnoxious that you could possibly think of putting there. Two of them are put in an extreme angle, not even going to straight across. So like the one at our driveway, we can't even hit it square, or I say square, meaning the two front wheels hit at the same time, they're having to go over it one wheel at a time. We were doing that with the one out at the edge of lot six and seven. Now boulders have been placed right up against the asphalt area, making it very difficult to completely make that term define hit it square. I mean, it's a case of, their intended purpose is really to annoy and be abusive. And I think if anybody's good and value it, they would have to see that. So, it's, I mean, I think it's helpful for you, the fact that you actually have this thing in the zoning, it says at any point, they are structurally part of the driveway now, it's a structural modification, even though, yes, it can be removed, I mean, the fact that it's can be quickly removed, quickly added in, has not changed the fact that it's a structural modification to the common driveway. And as I said, you see the water pooling up, I have no idea what the effect is going to be in the winter time. And it's, I mean, it's point now, we have friends, I'm the only one to go to the last speed bump, they take into parking just before that. Of course, the neighbor, lot eight is now threatening to tow the vehicles, even if they're there just to pick up their kids and be out there in ten, fifteen minutes. It's gotten to the point of even confronting our visitors.
But again, that's.
When they're sitting there waiting, but still, this, this is the situation where, I mean, I don't know where you go if, the next step, you know, if we decided that the building inspector's opinion is correct.
Okay, well, let's give the rest of the board a chance if they wish to make any comments.
Yes, we do.
But I want to open it up to you guys first.
My only question is, I don't, I don't think it applies, because it would only apply to fences, but it does sound, well, one, I can't figure out why you guys can't agree on speed bumps that work, or why we need that many of them, but, um, there are things, there are laws about spite fences, but I don't think that applies to speed bumps. Otherwise, I don't think, having come from a construction background, I don't think the percentage of slope applies to speed bumps. That's my background.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, the speed bumps are here. What was the problem? Obviously speeding in the neighborhood, or kids on motorcycles, I mean, what led to that?
Our kids only have used bicycles or scooters, in fact, that's, they were lot eight that has the, all the motorized, you know, four-wheelers, motorcycles, and all that type of dirt bikes on it. I've, I've lived there for sixteen years, coming up on seven, sixteen, something like sixteen years. And, you know, I've, first of all, it's like the driveway's pretty much completely clear. There's not trees, I mean, over there that's giving you, blocking your view, you know. I typically have driven that, typically around fifteen, eighteen miles per hour. And that's been, I just go by what my speedometer is on it. And I'm always, you know, watching what's going on. There's never been an incident of anybody, an accident, or near accident, or anything of that nature. You know, the previous owners who were lot, with lot seven, they had young children when they moved in there, and we never had any particular incident there. There's children, or more younger children, now some are grown up, with the other lot that it goes through before it gets to Brigham Road, and never had any particular issue there. We have, you know, there's been issues separate from this, like I said, it becomes, where it's become much.
Okay, I think I'm going to stop you there, because I think we're getting into the personal things that are going on that may have brought this, these barriers to be in place. But again, what we're trying to do is to determine whether or not we feel that the design specifications in seven thirteen apply to the speed bumps that were placed on the driveway. Does anyone else have anything that they'd like to add or subtract?
Well, I'm just curious, Sue, I mean, my understanding of slopes with driveways only has to do with water runoff. You mentioned construction on your side, but what's your experience with the term slope was used?
It's, it's for grading. But the thing about speed bumps is that usually when you see them in commercial applications, there is a gap for the water runoff. Again, that can be accommodated by just adjusting, because it looks like some of these speed bumps are in two pieces, so that the water could get by if they installed them differently. But there are so many different ways to do a speed bump. There are the kind that you don't notice as much, and then there's the kind that would make my car vun out, but.
But they're not typically considered with slope, with the term slope?
No, they don't, they're, they're independent of the slope of the driveway.
Anytime I've heard slope discussed, be it streets or driveways, here at any town official meeting, they've been concerned with things like, can a police cruiser get up it in the winter time when there's snow on it? And, you know, can a ambulance get up it, or a fire truck, or whatever? They're concerned with the angle that the vehicle is traveling in. You know, there's a, there's a different, in the current bylaw, there's a different angle for the entryway to the driveway than the rest of the rest of the driveway.
A much smaller slope.
And that's all about, and that's all about access and being, vehicles being able to get in, accessing off the road, and then traveling on the driveway when it's slicker.
This whole place is like an old field. The whole area is flat.
It was a hayfield.
It was an old hayfield, right?
Yeah, it was wheelers hayfield.
How long is the driveway, if I may ask?
Could you go into the worst area?
How many speed bumps are there?
About four.
This is, Danny? Have guidelines for spacing with speed bumps?
No, but there is a height, height. When we put one into the elementary school, it was a, just a little bump, and we took it out for the winter time because we'd tear it up with the plows.
Yeah.
And it was kind of signed, there was signage at each bump, and then they suddenly had the great idea of putting two on.
Gomorrah.
Gomorrah Road, and.
Oh, they're terrible. My tire fits on top of it. Yeah.
They flower it. But I'll tell you one thing, you don't want to go over them in an ambulance, because the ambulance guy is, I don't know who he is, a fire truck. Because I had a guy, a paramedic in the back, we went over a speed bump, the speed bump, in the heat of battle, trying to get somebody to the hospital, he bumped their head, we had to get him out of the ambulance so he could continue to the hospital. So something like, what's down there? You drive an ambulance in there, and you call him for a heart attack or something like that, and they come down and hit, somebody's going to get hurt.
Okay, but it comes down to, do you think it's covered under this?
I don't know. I mean, if you look at this, and the covenant here that they had from Ruth Wheel way back when, refers to the owners of lot six, seven, and eight, shall have the joint responsibility for the repair and maintenance. It's up to the three people that live there, and something as drastic as what's put down there, I wouldn't think that they want all three people to agree to it. That's my opinion.
Okay, everyone at the table had an opportunity to ask or say what they wish?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Why are they all at the end? Is it okay to speed from Brigham Road until you get to lot six? Or should they, I'm just curious how, how the placement happened. It's totally irrelevant to the decision we're about to make, I'm just curious.
Who did it?
Was there any justification?
So, there is any, we're allowed to talk now.
If the folks who were asked a direct question, and she was the only one that seemed to have one, sure.
Okay.
If you, first, if you stand up and give your name and street address.
Greg, from alley thirty-two Brigham Road. So I can address a few points, but first, maybe your question.
Yeah, well, it's just, how did you determine the location? It's just.
Because those are the locations that we have the ability to influence or control, because the other property we don't own. Despite it being easement, it is the responsibility of the subservient easement holder to maintain their own property where the easement is.
I'm sorry, your voice is waning, and.
I know. All right. So basically, that's, it's not, not our jurisdiction, or we're not.
So your, your agreement only covers lot six, seven, and eight, and not the first part of it, as you're saying?
Right. The agreement does cover the first lot, but easement law states that although there can be an easement, the person who owns the land underneath the easement is responsible for the, you know, maintenance and repair of that.
Is that what your agreement says?
The covenant says something different. So we could, we could put more down, but, you know, I, I figured, you know, if the owners of those lots in there, if they felt it was a safety issue for their kids, whom are old, you know, much older than ours, then they could do the same, if they so felt.
So is it fair to say the speed bumps are only on your property?
No, no. They're on lot six and seven.
So that leaves lot?
Your which lot again?
I'm lot eight.
So you go over the most speed bump?
Correct, we have four.
You don't go over one and get home? You go over four.
The first lot only goes over one, this lot only goes over two, and we have four, there's two additional ones way beyond there, driveway that have homes here.
Okay, well, let, let's let the speaker finish before, sorry.
My primary comment would be just reciting that the, you know, the provision that the building inspector called out does not apply to speed bumps, and there are not zoning as the building inspector pointed out.
Is this your opinion, or?
No, this is, as pointed out.
We have a copy of the decision from the building inspector, and that's why we're here. Because in his decision, he also said, if you don't like my answer, you could appeal to the zoning board of appeals.
Sure.
And that's what's happening this evening.
Right. Well, if you're curious about previous agreements, I know there's questions about why can't we all get along, and that type of thing, there's been three previous attempts to remove them, each time the agreement's being broken very shortly thereafter. We have young kids, and it's not safe the way that the easement cuts a lot in half. We actually have more land on the other side.
So the easement cuts right to the middle of your property?
No, it cuts it right in half. We actually have a field where they go play, where they go play, and they have to cross this area all day. We have a garden over there, and there have been many issues which unfortunately have, you know, led to the meeting and decision to put the speed bumps in.
It's a private matter.
It is a private matter.
Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak or ask a question? Yes, Dave?
Yes, Tom Sanford. If there's an underlying covenant, an underlying application and permit, right, granted for a common driveway, and there's plans, there's drainage calculations provided, there's everything provided, and then there is downstream, a material change that is pretty significant that affects drainage, affects contours, affects everything, wouldn't that be in violation of the underlying permit that was granted when the whole thing was put together?
Well, this is why personally I asked if the member of the planning board was here, because it's the planning board that writes the bylaw. dramatically change what was initially there? But unfortunately, that's not before us, okay? What is before us is a decision by the building inspector and whether or not we agree with his decision, that he made the right decision. And that is that these particular sections do not apply. Not addressing any agreement, okay, that may be among the parties or anything else, but do these particular sections of the bylaw apply to this instance?
Okay. If I can make a comment and sort of touch it on the same thing? We don't have before us a copy of the permit that was originally granted to put this driveway in.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
No, we do not.
What's that?
That's a copy of the covenant.
That's what was given to the planning board and that was recorded for that driveway.
Yeah, I understand that, but that was a requirement, that they create the covenant requirements as a condition of the special permit.
Yeah, and it had to be recorded, yeah.
But we don't have a copy of the actual special permit. Nobody has presented that to us.
There's no special permit. The planning board votes.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. We don't...
We don't have a copy of the decision.
They voted at some point back in 1998 to allow this to go in. There's nothing documented saying what that was. They put no additional condi... From what I can see, there are no additional conditions created.
Other than much in the bylaw.
So they required that these covenants be created and attached to each of their lots. And the bylaw at the time required them to do that, and that was all done. The driveway was put in. It was presumably inspected by someone at that point. The special permit ended when it was inspected. There's nothing... When we issue a special permit, we put living conditions on it that they must continue on doing things. This died. There's nothing there. So what exists and the reason that they wanted everything about maintenance in the covenants was that the covenants cover it. And the covenants are outside of our realm. It's not a, from my perspective, it's not... You can't go back and say, well...
So the simple answer is you don't think that the articles in the bylaw apply?
Correct.
And you would uphold the building inspectors?
Yeah, I have a little different rationale for it, but I don't think, I don't think it's a issue that the town can deal with.
It just doesn't, there's no reference to speed bumps anywhere here.
You're gonna have to speak up again, the deaf lady's here.
There's no reference to speed bumps anywhere here. There's no precedent for, you know, reference to speed bumps in any...
Well, there's also, quite frankly, no reference to putting spikes down either.
Right, so isn't there some sort of, there's no reference to any other external...
What we're determining is, when they're talking about slope, do we feel that these speed bumps in the driveway constitute a change in slope? That's how I'm looking at it.
Yeah, that's the way I'm looking at it.
Well, the special permit, when it was voted on back then in 1998, had this paragraph 714.2, the association agreement. And that's where the requirement is that the common driveway, for the maintenance of the common driveway, and so that the initial specifications of the common driveway are maintained. So that, they required that that be in the covenants, and it is.
Well, you could conceivably say that that particular verbiage says they have to maintain the status quo?
Well, and that's, they required that they put it in the covenant. And the covenant is the enforceable document, but it's not enforceable by us.
The question is, did the building inspector make the correct interpretation, in your eyes, of the bylaw? Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak?
Anyone else can. Sure.
One of the other things that is specified many times in both the covenant and also what's in that section in the common driveway is the, you know, access and safety, right? And specifically, you know, please fire ambulances. And I think one of the things that is coming out here is that the change is significantly impacting that. That, yes, it may be a rare occurrence, and hopefully not have to be the one that's there to say, you know, especially an ambulance down there. But it definitely is something that, you know, said before, it was, you know, wouldn't want to be the one to have to try and get someplace quickly and having to be riding in the back of the ambulance. I mean, I'm myself, and the ones that live in the common driveway in that situation. And it's said, it's littered all over our covenant, that's also over that section. And this states, they talk about slope. I mean, I know the terminology, if you look up on things online, you want to say you think they worry about slope, because things aren't too steep so that you get erosion. And that's usually what the, so having a lower slope so you don't have things rolling away. And, but also when it discusses other things in there, it does discuss, you know, discuss access to the vehicles, ability to get down the driveway. And right now, you know, my kids...
Just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that may be in your agreement, okay? But that's not what's on the table tonight. The only thing that we can review is whether or not the decision of the building inspector was a proper interpretation of what's written in the bylaw. We can sympathize that we wouldn't want to be riding an ambulance up your driveway or wouldn't want to have to try to plow it. And, you know, we can have sympathy for that sort of thing. But the only jurisdiction we have is over determining whether or not we feel that the building inspector made the correct decision when he said that the particular articles in the bylaw do not apply to speed bumps. Anyone disagree with that at the table?
I agree.
I agree.
So one, I guess, question would be, what would be considered a modification that would be in violation of that? I mean, somebody put one in, does it have to be the fact that it would be in asphalt versus these rubber speed bumps that are placed down? If the asphalt was put in and raised the driveway to produce these slopes that exceeded, would that be something, I guess?
I could be totally incorrect, and my colleagues can correct me if they think I'm wrong. But they're talking about slope of the driveway. This is slope. Now, there may be an acorn here, and there may be a tree starting to grow out among the asphalt here. But it would have to change, this is what I'm hearing, okay? Have to change the slope of the driveway. How do you folks see it?
Basically, that's what it is. But I keep reading the covenant. Now, does two out of the three agree to the speed bumps?
Yes.
Well, that was one. Are you saying yes? Okay, I couldn't hear it.
There was, there was a...
Could you give your name and address?
Yes. Colleen Devish, 29 Brigham. There was, there was a request of three meetings, and the Schulz's were sent notification of those meetings to discuss the maintenance of the private road. This is a private road, and that was also in the directive by the building inspector. He also mentioned that he felt there was no jurisdiction because it is a private road. And so all parties were notified, and two of the households were at the meeting. Matter of fact, the Schulz's attorney asked on two occasions if the meetings could be rescheduled, which we did. I even asked, give me some dates when we could meet that would be agreeable to everybody. There was no response to that. So we did start, we wanted to have a meeting in October about the maintenance of the road, and we did not have one until December 19th. So we waited over two months for them to be able to respond and be a part of this, and they were not at the meeting. But they were sent the agenda and the minutes of the meeting.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
While it's somewhat, doesn't really enter into our decision. Background is always good.
Can I speak to that, Pepper?
Sure.
First of all, we had, the request from the attorney was to not have a meeting until some piece of litigation between us and the owners of Lot 8 were finished.
Speak up if you can.
The request was not to have the meeting until the litigation that was going on at that time between us and the owners of Lot 7 had finished. That litigation was still ongoing up to that point. They kept ignoring, basically, the request. It wasn't that anything was us ignoring them. That was the request. They did send a agenda, the agenda, the no mention of speed bumps. The agenda also was about having, for some reason, we have to get this, repairs done and get the process going right away. It was first sent to us late October when they first wanted a meeting. I didn't see where, how it was so important to get started when winter arrived. Here we are in mid-October. Nothing has ever been done on maintenance and what the purpose of that meeting was. Nothing's indicated that we're about to get it sealed fully before and there are types of repairs in the next week. But it basically were coming up now in 10 months since that. So I just wanted to put a little bit of that background out there on that because I think it was misleading, the statements that were just made.
Thank you for sharing, but again, we have to stay focused on what our determination needs to be based upon. I'm sorry, I just stuck my phone. No one else in the audience has any comment? Okay, anyone at the table have a comment, thought?
Yeah, I do have something to say about what you had said. The speed bumps, you said, can be installed anyway if there's openings. We don't even have an inch of opening to exit our driveway. We put the speed bumps the entire width across the grass and the only opening to the easement, and you see in the pictures, my kids can't, there's not an opening for drainage, there's not an opening to get over on a bike, there's not an opening to get over on a scooter. Scott can't, we can't leave on a lawn mower. That's the way that he put it. He basically speed bumped us into our home. There's not an inch to get out of our property anywhere into the common driveway.
Okay.
I have to respond to that. I have tractors and lawn mowers and the like, and young kids, and actually...
We are also speed bumped into our own house.
We're also having to drive over the speed bumps. I have a trailer that I, you know, load up and take places. That has to go over the speed bumps. But the bottom line is, you know, none of that is an issue for access. My kids are riding over them. Other kids are riding over them. My tractor rides over them. So we just have to correct that. I mean, it's not as big a deal as being painted, you know?
I just feel so bad.
I would like to correct that, actually, because you've already seen that.
Okay, we're gonna go one, one more time, and then we have to get more focused because we're making a decision based on whether or not the interpretation of the bylaw by the building inspector was correct. And while I'm interested to see how this breakdown could happen, it really isn't pertinent to what we're doing here. And although I might have feelings, were I one of the three that lived there, okay? But the only thing this board can do is look at the decision made by the building inspector and determine whether or not he was correct. As far as we're concerned, I mean, we're not perfect. As far as we're concerned, in his interpretation of the bylaw.
Right, it's one last comment.
Sure.
Key pieces in that, when I talk about the slope, it does make a reference to it at any point. It's not...
He makes...
The specific thing in the designation that refers to the slope does refer to it at any point. I know people seem to want to look at it just from the start of the driveway to the end of the driveway, but it does refer to it at any point. Granted, the speed bumps are made twelve inches of a point, but it does refer to it at any point of the driveway. And it said, the driveway does now have four points, four locations that exceeds that slope. And it said, I mean, the slope is definitely, it does impact drainage.
And I will add to that, the building inspector did express concern come winter, the impact of the drainage with the ice melt.
Quite so, my...
Very specifically.
So I went through, he has mentioned that in his decision.
I've read this, and I've read it, and I've read that went down and over and over. I don't even believe that this falls under us. It's...
The building inspector wrote a determination for the petitioner, and in his discourse, he included, if you disagree or if you want to, you can appeal to the zoning board of appeals. These folks have appealed to the zoning board of appeals, filed the paperwork, paid the fees, sent out the notifications. Now, what we need to determine is whether or not his decision was correct.
So you would like a motion made?
At any point, at any time, someone wants to make a motion, that would be fine with me.
All right, let's record it.
You either want to move to support or disagree with the decision of the building inspector, as it pertains to...
Please say support because I can see it's too negative.
Yeah. I heard that. Stomach's a ground. Okay. Want to make a motion to move to support the decision of the building inspector as to the Schulz's, the application from...
The slope of the driveway.
The slope of the driveway from Schulz, 360 Brigham Road. So...
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, who's voting on this? Who are the five prime?
It'd be S5 again.
It'll be the five principal members.
Uh-huh. Oh, yeah, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, I'll go first. Okay, I'll go first. I vote to support.
I support it.
Don't like it.
You're taking up a collection, are you?
Okay, so, this one?
Yeah, I, I think to overturn a decision, number one, I would need very strong evidence to overturn one of our officials. And number two, when you read it, it really, I mean, it applies to slope. I know there's a lot of troubles in the neighborhood, okay? I hope you folks can all go have a few beers together or something and try to put aside what is happening.
We'll be needing approval for it.
Remember, the children are watching.
And snow is coming. I can make a rather foolish. Don't move. Yeah, second.
All those in favor, I, all those opposed, we shoot.